Go ahead, Mr. Demars.
We provided you a memo, memorandum 1245 with respect to a board assignment on public records. Specifically, it dealt with whether or not the county could charge for the time staff spends with people requesting to review records to make sure that the records remain and are not either changed in terms of the order of where they're at in the files or removed from the files. And we've advised that while it is lawful to impose those charges, the current administrative directive does not establish charges for that clearly, in our view, and that's an opportunity for the board to weigh in on what they may wish the county administrator to do in that regard.
We'd like some guidance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barbetta.
Well, first of all, on regular public records requests, we are charging for those, copies of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Certainly charged for the copies of the instruments or for discs if they're on or into a disc.
But the law's always allowed us to copy for time spent for staff, too. You're just opining on it now that that is the law, so we should have been charging for that.
Well, that's a policy determination, is whether or not you.
I don't think it's a policy determination. I don't think it's a policy determination. We should be doing it.
We are, as I understand, charging for time to gather materials for a public records request. We are, as far as I know, we're not consistently charging to have someone sit in a room with a bunch of boxes when someone's looking at them.
Well, that's just not fair. I mean, we took, one of our assistants upstairs spent an entire day from nine to five with certain constituent who brought her own copier or scanner, and that person should be charged for that time.
Well, I think you can charge, if the policy is changed, you could charge prospectively.
So you're saying that despite what the law says, we can do. We've got a separate policy that says only for copies?
I've said, we just haven't addressed this issue in our policy, and I think it would be advisable to tell people in advance if you're going to charge them for something and not bill them after the fact without having told them.
I think they should know that they're public records requests. In other words, they're getting around the system by bringing their own copier and their own scanner, using our office space and our secretarial services. That's just uncalled for. So I want that person billed, and the other thing I want is that person is making a ton of public records requests lately. I want to see all payments received from her for the past six months. So I'd like to see a copy of that, Mr. Reed, because I'm hearing that there aren't been payments being made, and for her to be able to sit there for an entire day and not be billed for that, and while we lost an assistant for the entire day, is just not right.
Well, I think for anyone that, where it's required that staff sit there, be present while they go through that record, those records, I think that anyone and everyone should be charged for that accordingly. Commissioner Patterson.
Yeah, I think, I don't disagree with that, although, you know, I don't know how you work out what's a legal charge. I mean, I don't think you can charge $100 an hour or so.
We can figure that out.
Okay. But the question Mr. Demars raises is somebody did that without having been told they would be charged, and Joe is saying they should be billed retroactively, they should have known. I'm not sure that's fair. I think people need to be told that as they do it.
If I could just, one of the issues is if we don't give, and Crystal's coming in, and by the way, this will, I do want to recognize, Crystal's been handling public records here for some time, and the burden has increased immensely, but I would indicate to you that one of the issues we try to do is notify someone while the cost will be, or else we prepare them and they don't show up to pay. And so that's one of the things we don't want to do, is assemble a number of records. And Crystal, we're having this discussion, I know you're in transit down here, but one of the issues is notifying them that these are the records, this will be required for their assembly or their reproduction, so that we don't do it and they just sit there. And then the other issue is that issue of if we can have someone observe them in an area while they're looking through records, we can allocate the cost of that or come up with a formula. You know, it's the actual cost of the person, which may vary, but, Crystal, we're in the middle of the discussion on the public records. Yes?
Good morning, Commissioners. Crystal Pruitt for the record, and I get some input on part of the discussion. What you're noticing is an increased amount of individuals here in the county making records requests. In the past, we've not had to charge for people to review records. Generally, most of our records are electronic, and so most of the requests that do come in through our process, we're able to provide those records electronically. In most recent cases, you've probably have noticed where we did have someone to come in and it was an abundance amount of time. We weren't anticipating that. Had we known, we would have given them an estimate of the number of boxes and tried to allow for the amount of time, but it has not been consistent over the years, and I think now because things have certainly increased in production, we're just saying we need some guidance on policy so that we can be consistent in how we charge.
Commissioner Robbins.
I'm still not understanding how there's a difference between that we were charging for people in order to prepare them, but we weren't charging for people to be a custodial and stand there. I don't understand the difference between the two and why that was happening. To me, it's the same thing. You're expending staff time for a public records request, and from my understanding, this one was, you know, an entire day of staff production that was lost that day, but if, I don't understand the difference in how administration struck the difference between the two of preparing versus standing there. Either way, it's a public records request that we're expending money on.
Administration didn't make a decision not to do that. Someone made a decision, just like someone made a decision in other departments that why I'm sitting here, you can look at this, you know, keep it in. The idea is you don't want them taking things out of files is the principle. So there have been, and Crystal, there have been areas where people have come in and looked at something, and it's being done like at the counter, and you wouldn't charge somebody for looking at, you could, but we would not in the past consistently charge somebody for viewing a public document at a, for example, a front counter where the person's in view. If you sit in another room with boxes, you know, there needs to be a charge, and that's what I believe, Crystal would say, is probably inconsistent throughout the organization. It's based on a decision or judgment of what is convenient. In the case we're talking about, it was an all-day event, and I understood it took place in an area that was not viewable, and that should have been charged, but the other issue we're bringing out is we typically give a, not knowing how long somebody will take, we typically, and it's a practice around the state, to notify somebody on what the potential cost would be. I will tell you, I've had two sisters in another jurisdiction where one would request the assembly and not show up, and the other with a different last name would come in and pick up the records because they were already assembled. That's documented in Titusville, Florida. So that's the kind of issue you have to, you have to just be on, be aware of. But in this case, I understand under the board, you know, the issue, the event happened, but I think, Crystal, that's a fair analysis of.
Yes, it is. I think in the case that we are referring to today, it is unusual. We've never had a citizen to come in and spend an entire day reviewing files as such. Generally, again, most of our documents, because of technology, we're able to provide them electronically. So we have very few citizens who actually do come in and review files. Many times, there are files in our procurement area, those files, again, are easily available, and they can stand at the counter and review. If they need a copy, then they pay for the copies. But I think in regards to the incident that we're referring to today, it was unusual. I myself was surprised that it did take as long as it did. If we had known eight, nine hours, we would have estimated that cost and asked them to pay upfront.
And I think that we need to establish a policy to address that. We're not trying to prohibit people from accessing public records, but we also, what we want to do is make sure that we have some compensation for the amount of time that staff has to spend on just that as opposed to your other duties, and I think it's only fair to all of the citizens that we have, that we put such a policy in place so that when and if it occurs again, it can be addressed according to the policy.
Absolutely. I guess I will just add, just on a final note, we are looking for some guidance so that we can establish consistency across the county, so that each and every department knows the cost per hour to certainly charge citizens when that needs to happen.
Commissioner Robbins.
And what have you found with other counties of what they're, how, you know, I do happen to know of it in conversations actually with at least one commissioner that I, at a recent Florida Association of Counties, they set like anything over this minute, this many minutes is charged. I mean, have you acquired best practices from around the state for that?
We have, and we've been working certainly in concert with our legal department, and basically what we've come to, anything over an hour for time, staff time, we do charge. We do that routinely with our email request. But I myself have also checked with other counties like Pinellas and Hillsborough as well, and they have very little requests. I think when you look in the region, Sarasota County is probably high on the ranking in regards to the number of requests that we're receiving, and that may just be a result because we've been pushing and promoting our transparency and being open, and so the citizens here enjoy the opportunity that they can make a request and actually see the records.
Commissioner Heinz.
Well, I guess my question for the county attorney, are you looking for us to say, yes, let's follow Latchua Counties? That's in your memo. More than 30 minutes you charge. Are you, are you looking for direction for us to say, please follow Florida Statute 119.07? And, I mean, I'm in favor of if you can estimate to require a deposit, how detailed do you want us to say right now?
I don't think you need to be very detailed because this would be implemented through a county administrator revising an administrative directive, and I think that county administrator could let you see that.
I think it's very clear that this commission as a whole is saying that this is, this type of charge needs to be added, and I agree with you. We can post this on our website, let people know upfront, tell them this is going to be charged, and if you believe it's going to be fairly high, as it says in this memo, we'll require a deposit, and if it's less, we'll return the difference. But, so.
The issue that's prospective is one issue, the issue of retroactively sending a bill if the board wishes to do that. We can do that, but it is, the individual was not advised of that charge, I believe.
That's, that's correct. In the incident that we are discussing today, the individual was not advised of the charges in advance for the staff time to sit in the room while she reviewed the files.
So if we, if we have 10 people walk in at the same time, we've got to give them each a conference room and put an employee in with each of them to do exactly what she did that day. That makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. That one, that person needs to be billed, and again, I want to see a copy of the past six months of receipts, bills to her and receipts of monies from her, because I'm hearing from other people in the community who have made public records requests, and they've had to pay from day one. As soon as they made the request, they had to pay. So they're talking to me about selective enforcement, that a certain individual is getting treated totally different than everybody else in the community, and that's just not right. And the policy is clear. The statute is clear. So I don't understand where the problem is, and I agree with Commissioner Robinson. It's open and shut. You bill for public records requests. I don't, I don't see where the difficulty is here, and it's, I'm just shocked at what's going on, that I watched that, our biggest conference room on the second floor being utilized for an entire day by one person with boxes all over the place, and every time I turned around looking for one of the assistants, they were in that room, basically sitting there. That makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
So, Crystal, we have the amount of time for that incident?
Yes, we can provide the board with, as a matter of fact, we can go back this past year and show you the number of requests and including cost for anything that was received by the county.
And that individual has been billed on other occasions?
Yes, as a matter of fact, there is a similar request from the same individual as of today, and I have provided them an estimate for cost to come in and review the files. I believe right now, administration tells me there's about 17 boxes that have been pulled and are sitting in a conference room now, and so we're trying to schedule time for that person to come in and review.
Is that done without being paid? We haven't been paid for the, have we been paid for the prior ones yet? Are there any outstanding bills to this person?
There are two requests outstanding right now. They've not come in yet to pick those up.
No, I'm talking about paid. How much money have we, have we received payment from this person?
Not for the request that they've just made, no.
But prior requests?
There has been some payments, yes.
Some payments. So we have any outstanding bills to that person?
Not for that particular person, no.
Okay.
So prior to your departure, and we regret that you're leaving the county services, could you prepare that, I believe you're leaving the 30th?
Yes, that is correct.
You have the expertise in this because you've been doing it for particularly the last year.
Wait a minute.
Commissioner Patterson.
If we're going to bill retroactively, that needs to be a commission vote.
I would think it should be.
And there has not been one to do that. I agree that people should be billed for that, whether they copy it themselves or they don't. If they don't copy it themselves, then there's a bill to copy it, and there's a bill for time. If they copy it themselves, there should be a bill for time. I think that's perfectly reasonable, logical, but I don't think we should do it retroactively. I just don't think that's fair. And, you know, I don't think it's right to say we're going to do it unless the commission asks that you do it with a vote.
Then I would await a vote, but we have the staff member here who's trying very, very diligently to deal with all the public records requests. We have some. If, if they're going to be back in here again, you should notify them that we're going to charge them for the hour.
Yes.
But retroactively, I don't know. There's legal opinion as well. I don't know if you want to retroactively charge.
We have not gone back retroactively. I think going forward, they have been advised, this latest request, that it will require a number of staff hours for them to come in and review, and they have been advised of that, including the emails request that go along with that.
And if it says the copying charges are estimated to be such and such, and you will be charged by policy for the hours spent reviewing, then you would be able to give them the rough estimate and know that the final bill will be however long you say.
Exactly.
Commissioner Heinz.
And then just to follow up with that is that a deposit may be required. That's, I think the key here is, you heard the example that Mr. Reed talked about, and we have that sitting here right now. You've already done all the work. You've done two requests for this person, and they've not picked it up. So you've not handed them the bill, is what I'm hearing, and so she doesn't have anything outstanding because she hasn't come in, but there's another request being done, so.
He was talking about something out of the county.
His example, but I'm assuming that what you're saying is to answer Mr. Barbetta's question, Commissioner Barbetta's question was that there's no outstanding money due from this person. Well, technically, you hand her the bill when she comes in and picks her stuff up.
That is correct.
So there's two, you've already done all the work. The work's done, but it's not due yet because she hasn't come in. What I don't want to happen is what happened in Mr. Reed's example from Titusville, is that now we go ahead and do a third one, and then that one's not picked up. So that, when it's a major request like this, the way to protect ourselves is to estimate the time and take a deposit. So I, just following through that last sentence is that's how I think we protect ourselves in this situation.
Commissioner Robbins.
I don't understand how we could provide, let her know it's going to be charged when we couldn't have done that before. I mean, technically, we've just, you know, supposedly discussed the policy. I think what the policy was, actually was, was you'll be charged for what staff time is spent, and it just wasn't done. I think the policy was there before, and what we need to do is really fess up to what really happened is we just didn't, we just didn't do what we're supposed to do.
I don't know that the administrative directive is that clear.
Then how could we have done?
How could we do it today?
How could we do, how could we have already done it then? If that's the case.
She's got a free ride. That's what it comes down to.
I am not at all arguing where this ought to go in the future, and I believe it would be excellent for the county to have consistent policy and application of that policy on these charges.
As I do.
But I do think that the administrative directive needs to be more clear on that point.
You know.
Commissioner Patterson.
You know, just putting myself in the place of maybe doing something like this where I want to research the county boxes, if I'm told I'm going to pay whatever it is, 20 bucks an hour, whatever the price is, I'm going to be a little more circumspect in what I request, which is why I think, not just once, but I think a person needs to be reminded of it, and I think Commissioner Heinz is correct. If it looks like it's going to be a big deal, a deposit is logical and prudent, and if we screwed up, we screwed up. I think you're hearing that we screwed up. It's obvious. What do we want to do? You know, I'd correct it.
Commissioner Heinz.
Mr. Demars, you keep referring to the administrative directive. Mr. Reed, is that in writing what the directive is that says this is what we'll do?
Directive, directives are placed in writing by the administrator, and you issue those, and you, adapting changes like electronic records, you change the administrative policy.
Okay.
In this case, the individual was not told that they were going to pay that. We could do a charge. I believe there's doubt whether you have the grounds to charge them retroactively for that, but the person might pay if we send the bill.
Well, your policy doesn't, I'm assuming, doesn't say that.
Their policies, I inherited. I haven't written one.
They're yours now. No, I'm teasing you, but, I mean, I think the directive should, if it doesn't read that we're going to follow the Florida statutes in regards to this, if it says something that, well, Sarasota County's made a policy decision to only charge for copies, not charge for staff time, I'm unclear where the, Mr. Demars is saying that it's a little unclear. If, if one of our staff told this person, we're not going to charge you for staff time to stand there, that's one thing, but if charging this person or any person for that staff time meets with the directive that's in writing, that's what we should follow. And if it is, does not follow this Florida statute, then I think this board is saying it needs to. And, you know, that's, it's hard to say what our opinion is if not having it in front of us, but.
Crystal wanted to comment.
Sure. Commissioner Heinz, I just wanted to point out, the current admin directive that we are referencing today dates back to 2009, and so that directive has not been updated. We're actually in the process of updating it, taking into consideration some of the things that we're talking about here today. What's our process? Do we charge for the retrieval of the records, including staff time to sit there and review? That type of detail is not spelled out specifically, but we do cite the actual statute for costs for doing public records, including the copying cost. And so what we're trying to get to today is just some guidance to be a little clearer, to be up on the times and including the technology. Again, most of the records are electronic, and so what we were doing back in 2009 is a lot different than what you see today. And again, it does require us to process records either electronically and sometimes retrieving records that date back several years and having to make those copies.
Well, I'd like to see that written directive so I can see how we need to move forward, you know, we need to change it or whatever, but I'd like to see that in writing. I don't know about the rest.
Be happy to do that, and be aware, we have a policy going on right now where we're rewriting all administrative directives. That's a process that's going on, and they're being done generally by the responsible party as preparing the draft.
Commissioner Robbins.
I agree with you, but I don't want to be caught, I don't want to have a door for, to walk through until we come back again at the next set of meetings, talk to this again, and meanwhile, we get all these requests flooding through for this, so we've got to do something.
Well, I don't think, I think if that can be gotten, for me, if it can be gotten to me this afternoon, I could make a decision from there.
I think the administration could begin to apply that policy before the directive is rewritten, if that's your point, I believe, on that.
Yes.
And I think the administration has told you that's what they, exactly what they intend to do. So I think it's going to be applied. There will be a charge for sitting with records, and people will make a deposit before they get to come and sit with records. Correct? So I think it's going to happen, and then the directive can also be written so that all staff know how to apply the policy.
At the different areas where those records exist, because they do exist all over.
Commissioner.
Yeah, my concern is, I brought this up five or six weeks ago, this exact point, the meeting or two before our break, so it has to be probably six weeks, saying this exact thing. The person was in our office, did we bill for it, and have we been paid? Here we are, six weeks later, we don't even know if we can bill for it, and obviously we haven't been paid for it. The state statute allows, allows us to do it. For some reason, we got an internal directive that limits the state statute, apparently. I don't understand that, how that happened. We don't have a copy of it. We don't know anything about it, and meantime, the requests are still coming in, and six weeks later, we don't have a definitive answer of what we're going to do, and that's very disturbing. The person should have been billed, and if we, if we want to vote on it, I'm going to vote that we do bill her, anybody, I don't care who it is, when you're taking that much time. They're public records, no doubt, but the state statute allows for charging, for copying, time to assemble, et cetera. That clearly includes sitting there with a staff person for an eight-hour period or nine-hour period. For some reason, that's not happening.
Commissioner Heinz.
Yeah, you know, looking at the statute, it says, you know, the agency may charge for that type of time, and if the directive is written, which I think it's important that we see it, maybe over lunch.
It's been sent to you electronically.
Great, thank you. If we made, a previous board made a policy decision that we wouldn't charge for that time because it hadn't really been happening that much, and now that we see that it is, then, because we're being asked to vote, do we retroactively bill somebody for this? I don't know until we read what our own policy says.
It's not ours, it's the administrator's.
Well, he works for us. So, you know, you're, you're asking for a policy decision from us, a vote today to say whether to bill this person in the past. That's one decision. We can make that. The second one, then, is clear that we are making a policy decision going forward that we shall charge. We're making the decision to charge, and then the only other question I think staff is asking us is, well, what's a, what's a reasonable amount of time? Is it 30 minutes? Is it an hour of time? And that may be something we might want to discuss to give them direction on that rewriting the policy.
Commissioner Patterson.
Yeah, one thing that I would want to know is, as the retroactive thing is discussed, are there other people? Surely, this can't, I mean, this may be unique to bring your own copier, but are there other people that have taken a good bit of staff time and not been billed for their time that we could apply this to and also bill retroactively as opposed to targeting, you know, a person unless it's really unique? And the second thing is, maybe we could answer now. How much do we bill an hour for our staff time?
Well, I can tell you for email requests, that we work closely with our IT department. We get email requests every day, and the cost per hour for IT staff time is $41.46.
Okay, so I happen to know that journalists in the past, at least one that I know of, have come in and looked at records. Were they billed $41.46 an hour?
Absolutely. You may recall during our baseball season when we required the team here, the Herald Tribune made many requests, and they were also charged and paid for the cost of IT going back and doing the records.
So the only thing that's been omitted is if staff time was not coupled with copier time?
Correct. And I think this is a unique case. As long as I've been here at the county, I don't recall a citizen coming in, spending eight, nine hours to review records. It is pretty unusual.
The other technology that is changing is that copiers or a cellphone can take a copy of a document while they're looking at it, and we would not charge. It's not a cost to us, but they can do that now. They couldn't do that in 2009. Been very difficult.
If you look at the second to last page of the directive, paragraph 10 is the applicable section.
That's what I said, it's been there all time.
It's been there, we just haven't.
Yeah, it just says we can charge for resources or personnel, so, and that's easy.
There's nothing to do, it's already there.
Send the bill.
So he has it.
Send the bill.
I'm sorry you need a vote on sending the bill.
The directive's there.
No, it's right here.
We don't need a vote.
It says retroactive.
All right, I'll make a motion that we send a bill. I move that we send a bill in accordance with the directive.
It's already in there. We don't need to change anything.
What page is it?
Paragraph 10, page 5 of 6 of the directive.
Madam Chair, I made a motion to move, send a bill to the. Madam Chair, I made a motion to move, send the bill to the person in accordance with the directive set forth.
Retroactively.
Doesn't matter whether it's retroactively. That's the...
In this case, it is.
I made the motion. I'm waiting for a second.
I seconded it.
Heinz seconded it?
Thank you.
Discussion?
Discussion is clear. The directive's there. The statute's clear.
It's in your email, Madam Chair.
I don't have the email. I'm sorry.
It's live email. I just, you were asking for it. I got it for you. You can do that electronically.
I have no further discussion, so, Mr. Heinz, if he has it. Commissioner Heinz?
No, that was my concern, was that we were asked to vote on something without seeing the directive. We've now seen the directive. By billing this person or any person in the past for this time, has clearly been allowed under this directive. So we're not doing anything different. First, and then second, I don't know, we're retroactively billing. Our policy right now is, we bill them when they walk in. This person has not walked in. When they do, that bill will be given. So now going forward, you know, it's, I think in this scenario, my biggest concern is that if this directive does not have an issue for a deposit and such a large request, then that's something I'd want to see. But for this motion, fully support it.
Another discussion.
Madam Chair, and just to read the lines so for the public can see. The directive clearly says, "The county has generally charged the base hourly rate, including benefits for each person inspecting and redacting exempt material. The same base hourly rate may be used for a clerical employee's time when that person is safeguarding such records from loss or destruction during an inspection." And that's exactly what occurred. So the policy's been there.
Commissioner Patterson?
I think when somebody's incurring a cost like that, we have an obligation to point it out, even if it's in your records as a policy. You know, this is going to be a several hundred dollar bill. It's not an insignificant thing. And I think this is a gotcha. I think it should be applied rigorously in the future, but I don't, you know, I don't see the fairness of this.
Commissioner Robinson?
It's very apparent that we weren't charging, and we had the ability to. I'm disappointed that we haven't fessed up, that we don't fess up on the administration's part, that it's there, the apparent attempt not to, to say that it wasn't. This is not acceptable to me as far as this is concerned. I'm very upset over this. I'm very upset because we lost money that day. We lost productivity that day. This is taxpayer money that we lost. This is, other people paid for this, quite honestly. Other people paid for this. Absolutely entitled to them. No qualms with them getting them. My qualm is the fact that other people had to pay for this. I do have an issue with it, and I completely understand Commissioner Barbetta and Commissioner Heinz. I do think that there's a notice issue. If the right thing for this person to do would actually be to pay it anyways, if there are going to be, a stand-up person would be to hand over a check and pay for it anyways, I just can't support billing them because we screwed up.
Commissioner Heinz?
And, Crystal, the records would show this was abnormal?
Yes, it is abnormal.
I haven't seen the historical record, but you have been involved with this.
Well, I guess, the question on that is, you know, did we screw up? Was there a statement to this person that, "Don't worry about it. You won't be charged this time"? Or, you know, that's where maybe we need some better communication, but in the decision on whether to bill them for this time or not, maybe we can have better communication, but only in the scenario where we said we won't do this, or if that person asked, will there be a charge? This is getting down into the nitty-gritty details of a bill and what happened. Our job is to set policy, not to do this. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place to do this fact-finding on this particular bill, but...
Sure. If I may speak.
Sure.
Commissioner Heinz, in this particular situation, we did pull the records. They had to be retrieved from our warehouse. In regards to administration and staff, I'm not sure that anyone thought or perceived that it would take nine hours. Had we known that, she would have been quoted, the staff time upfront. I was not made aware that she had spent nine hours here until the end of the day, and she had already reviewed the records and had her own scanner to make the copies.
Commissioner Patterson?
You know, reading from the policy, it says, "The same base hourly rate may be used for a clerical employee's time when that person is safeguarding such records from loss or destruction during an inspection." And it says "may." It does not say "will." And it probably should say "will," but it doesn't. And...
There are situations where you go from someone asking for any and all information related to a subject for the last 10 years, to someone saying, "Could I have a copy of that?" And if it's to have a copy of it, a single, I'm just saying the single page, both of those are under the same policy. And if you walked out of your office and said, "Can you get Miss so-and-so a copy?", the issue is, do you get them a copy and hand it to them so they can be gone? Or do you say, "I need to get a charge for that"? And the charges, the charges also are collected involving the clerk's office, so it's not a, in the county government, you can get multiple parties involved in the recouping. We can send the, we can send the bill, and perhaps the person will pay that. But you need to hear, and this isn't anything about Crystal, we're getting bombarded with public records.
Well, the other thing is, it probably should say, you know, some limit. So you aren't, somebody spends five minutes, you're not going to charge them. It should say, "Same base hourly rate will be used if anticipated time is more than, I don't know what it is, 20 minutes."
Well, we have a motion on the floor to send the bill according to the directive 902.
Correct.
So let's dispose of this motion, and if there's a need for further discussion, we can do that. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes nay. Motion fails. Two, three. I am...
That's an unhappy nay, by the way.
It is very unhappy because I, I think we've been taken advantage of. But going forward, I want us to rigorously enforce this because it's not fair to the staff or the taxpayers for us to have something on record and not adhere to it. Commissioner Heinz?
A sad nay and a difficult yes on my part, in that, Crystal, I appreciate the factual information you gave us, because I could see how a citizen could be, not necessarily misled, but wouldn't understand unless they were told. And so I think it's very clear that when something gets, when you know when someone says any or all, an explanation needs to the citizen to say, "You understand that this could be costly, and we'll give you an estimate." And that may, you know, make them say, "Well, let me get more specific in my request." Thank you.
Commissioner Patterson?
You know, part of the confusion is, you know, those of us involved in government may have the opinion and realize that it's logical that you're going to want to have a staff person there to safeguard records. But the average person walking off the street might not realize that it's part of our process to have somebody there the whole time. And actually, I remember a prominent citizen demanding access to my computer at the office and Commissioner Thaxton's computer, and sending somebody in. And I know for a fact there wasn't somebody in my office the whole time while they were in my office searching records on a particular thing, apparently of which nothing was found that was of interest. So, you know, it's, that's why you need to be told.
So, and Mr. Reed, making sure that this is on our website, this, with regard to these public records, I think it's going to be very important.
We can do that. The other, just tell you, the other strategy, there are other jurisdictions I've been in where the review of record takes place in the middle of a open area where anybody can watch that's assigned to the time to look over and make sure there's nothing being taken. But again, we've looked at this policy. Don is not here, but Don and I have looked and had concerns about the policy just from technology. A person brought their own scanner and scanned records, which would have reduced the cost. One other issue, you can have 17 boxes, and they're only looking for one thing, like the Bob Building or Fruitville Initiative, and they're only looking for one record related to those. So that's, but we do have this policy, and we'll be happy. And again, thank you, Crystal, for your service. We are spending almost one person's entire day dealing with public records requests.
I was told two.
Commissioner Robinson?
Well, there may be more, but I mean, Crystal's been doing that.
Two things. Even if that, even if there's one document being searched for, it takes time for us to compile those 17 boxes. So it's not just, you know, so we should be making sure that we're, you know, being reimbursed for taxpayer expense for that. But on top of that, is there, Mr. Demarche, in this, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm still not understanding this, because this is written by the administration and not by us. So I'm, is the, and how our policy translates into this. I'm not clear as to why we're even involved in this aspect of this right now, but...
Because there was a request of the commission to get involved.
The deposit, the deposit issue, is that covered? Do you believe that's covered? Do we need to do something? Or is there, I mean...
And how much deposit? You know, I mean, how do you define that?
The policy is right now under a point of review, but if the, it does not have a deposit now, isn't it correct?
It does not specifically spell out a deposit.
So because, this is not our, this is the administration code, so is that...
It would be lawful to impose one.
Are you going to address that? Do, I don't understand what, I mean, because this isn't us, for us to write this aspect of it. Are you going to address that, Mr. Reed? Or is this something you're seeking more direction on?
We will address that. The administrative policies get reviewed by the department. They come back up, and there's a sign-off. Most of our policies, the last influx of policy was done probably in 2009 as the downturn occurred. Most of them have the last administrator's signature, as this one does. We've asked Mr. Oublacker to look at it, Office of Financial Management to look at them in each department. And we are issuing them as they come back. I've done probably three since I have been here that have been new, but most of these are older policies.